Okay, um. It's on the clock, I'll have Mr. Johnson.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, everybody, thank you for coming to the, um, January 2005 Township Board Meeting. It's our inaugural meeting in the new town hall here. Probably the first time in many, many decades after there hasn't been a meeting in the old Township Hall there. Okay. We have, um, some, uh, okay, we have the consent agenda. We have some additions here. Uh, we have P, Trademark Construction Resent Contract. O, Building Codebooks. And R, Fringe Benefits.
So, how do you want to say it?
What's that?
Q.
Q.
Okay. And O P.
Can you repeat those, please?
Yeah, it's P would be Trademark Construction Resent Contract.
Can't that go with O?
What's that?
Can't that go with O?
Yeah, I guess so.
That's an A and an extra I, though?
Yeah, that'd be fine. Okay, so P would be, uh, would be Building Codebooks. And Q, Fringe Benefits.
Fringe. This letter, uh, can that, do you want that severed or can that go with the trademark?
I'm not sure. P is due to, actually, I'm...
It's just about doing the other part of the...
Yeah.
It's about rescinding...
Yeah. We'll just, you, say it again.
Yeah, yeah, one is about the effect of another.
Okay. Do we have, um, a consent? Do we have a motion here to approve the modi-, um, the modified, uh, agenda? The consent agenda?
Awesome.
Okay, do you have support?
I'll support.
Okay, we have a motion, support to approve the consent, the modified consent to, uh, to adjourn with the modi-, the additions to agenda. Any further discussion? Oh, okay, roll call vote?
Anderson, yes.
Yes.
Conzens, yes.
Uh, Stephen Chess?
Still agree, yes.
Citizens comments, this is any citizens wishing to address the board again. Um, there will be a second citizens comment if we can enter the agenda. Next one is, uh, Resolution 2025-01 Annual Meeting and Budget Hearing from March 11, 2025.
I make a motion to approve Resolution 2025-01. Support.
We have a motion, support to approve Resolution 2025-01. Okay, um, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Okay. Resolution 2025, 25-02 Clerk Salary. This one is, uh, for, okay. For fifty-two thousand, fifty-two thousand dollar, uh, one thousand dollar per election every fiscal '24 and she's asking for fifty-three thousand three hundred in fiscal year '25.
Is there an election in 2025? Do we...
Well, now that I know.
Not right now. It could be he's chairman.
And Richmond.
And Richmond as well. So, a thousand dollars, does that go?
Yeah.
There is no election?
I did not put that in for this year. It's, that was last year's.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Was this a cost of living increase?
Yes.
Okay.
Alright, um, then I'll make a motion, um, to support, or if that's not the right word, is it?
To adopt.
To adopt Resolution 2025-02 Clerk Salary.
I'll support.
Okay, we have a motion, support to adopt Casco Township Resolution 2025-02 for Clerk Salary. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Okay.
Is there a roll call or not?
No, they're, they're just...
Resolution.
Just Resolution.
Casco Township Resolution 2025-03 Treasurer Salary. Fiscal year '24 was thirty thousand three hundred and for fiscal year '25, they're asking thirty-one thousand zero six zero. Another cost of living increase, right?
Yes.
I make a motion to adopt Resolution 2025-03.
I'll support.
Okay, motion to adopt Casco Township Resolution 2025-03. Um, Tre- Treasurer Salary. Okay, all in, any question? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. This is, uh, Casco Township Resolution 2025-04 Trustee Salary.
I make a motion to adopt Resolution 2025-04 Trustee Salary.
Support.
Okay, motion, support to adopt Resolution 2024-04 Trustee Salary. Any question? All, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Two thousand, Casco Township Resolution 2025-05 Trustee Salary.
I make a motion to adopt Resolution 2025-05 Trustee Salary.
I'll support.
Okay, we have motion, support to adopt Casco Township 2025-05 Trustee Salary. All, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Ellie?
Aye.
Then we have Casco Township Resolution 2025-06 Supervisor Salary.
I make a motion to adopt 2025-06 Supervisor Salary.
I'll support.
We have motion, support to adopt 2025-06 Supervisor Salary. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, we're up to aye, um, and now a T. Budget amendments?
So, I apologize for giving them to you guys at the table, but, um, I've had a lot going on and I did what I could do. So, um, I tried to highlight the ones, and these are not complete. Um, I tried to highlight the same color so you can follow along. Um, the first one is for the county EMS mileage. Um, it's for eighty-two, sixty-three, sixteen. So, that goes along with, um, the second page on the bottom, the EMS contractual services. Basically, the county, um, collects the EMS mileage, sends us a check, and we in turn send a check to the EMS for the exact same amount.
Yes.
So, we, when we did the budget last year, we used last year's numbers because we don't know what they're gonna be, so that's why, why I didn't do them. And the next section, um, the first one is for elections. Um, it is over ten thousand seven hundred and twenty-fourty-one. And I am gonna move some money out of Deputy Clerk Salary on page two. I'm gonna take ninety-five hundred out with Jillman just working part-time. We have extra money in there. And then, um, the rest of it, I will be taking out of, uh, first page, the conferences. We have, we have a good chunk left in conferences that we probably won't use this, this fiscal year. So, those, those are that section. Um, the next section is the yellow highlighted on the first page, the audit fees. We have a little left there and I put it in the, the tax, um, account. And the last section is the clerk. Um, it's, the zoning enforcement wages are over forty-six seventy-two and I am taking money out of the drainage services because we haven't even used anything yet. Um, I will have to make more...
Adjustments.
Adjustments. Um, I just didn't have time to do them, so...
Okay.
I just wanted to get these at least done and then I'll do the rest of them for, for next month.
Okay, any questions or...
Do you see any requests coming up?
I don't think so.
I don't think many did need, sure enough, really.
Okay, any other questions? Do we have a motion here to approve, uh...
I make a motion to approve Supervisor Amendment 2024.
I'll support.
Okay, we have motion and support to approve, uh, budget amendments 2024, 2025. Okay, roll call vote?
Anderson, yes.
Yes.
Conzens, yes.
Stephen Chess?
So, we have a question here.
Okay. Okay, we have the preliminary budget?
It's not complete because again, I didn't have enough time. I was working on the plan when I went. I was trying to work on it and I'd get in here and there. Um, the letter that I wrote the board also goes along with this. I don't know if you even want me to read it out loud? Hi. Uh, Casco Township Board of Trustees, I have been tasked with taking over completing the township's annual budget at the special board meeting in December of 2024. As I mentioned at that meeting, I do not mind doing this job. However, I do not want to do it last minute. The preliminary budget should have been completed for the December meeting, so I am again racing against the clock to get a new budget done. I will ensure it's complete and ready for board approval at the February meeting. Since this job technically falls under the township's supervisor's duties and not the clerk, I am requesting to be compensated three thousand five hundred dollars for all of my time and work. I will not be doing these duties during my normal business day and will be doing them after work or on the weekends. I will do the budget amendments for the rest of the 2024, 2025 fiscal year, which ends on March 31st, 2025, as well as completing the new township budget for the 2025, 2026 fiscal year and will continue to do the budget amendments on at least a quarterly basis through the end of the 2025, 2026 fiscal year. I would request that the township board would likely to continue to do the budget for the 2026, 2027 fiscal year. The board approves that at its November 2025 board meeting. I am also requesting that since this job is part of the supervisor's duties, that the supervisor reimburses the township for this class for me doing the budget or that the supervisor takes a salary cut for that or not.
Roll call. Okay.
What's that?
I don't think, I don't think that's appropriate.
I don't think.
I don't think it's appropriate at all.
I do.
And also, it's the prerogative of going to be assigned or request other parties to do the budget if they choose to do so.
Or this?
It's alright to do it.
I'm gonna say, as a township president, as we all are, the township residents are paying, if, if this gets approved, they're paying me to do a job that Joe's getting paid for and not to me. That's where I'm at.
Yeah, no, I have no problem.
But you have to do it. If you do it, I guess that's where it's gonna be. I don't think that...
I agree with that.
And would you prefer that after the coming year, once, uh, we get this 2025, 2026, would you prefer that we go outside?
It doesn't matter to me. I don't mind doing it as long as it's not last minute. Like, again, I'm in the last minute because it should, we should have already had the preliminary at last month and then if we had to make any adjustments, we could have did it this month and next month.
I see.
Okay.
So, thanks for the time crunch. So, I don't mind doing it as long as, if, if you guys want me to do it by November, you tell me so that I can have a preliminary in December. There you go.
Okay.
And if you time, we might check house by source.
Absolutely.
Although, I should be told, I'd rather keep it in-house because that way we go back and forth on a daily basis, a monthly basis, whatever.
But she knows what's going on.
Yes, yes. So, I just, I need to see this burden fall on you.
I apologize, don't mind. It's the last minute and, and G is so busy for, for me doing year-on-stuff and audits and reports.
So, once you integrate this into your working system, it's better that we keep it in-house, I think. I feel more comfortable with it because then I have complete access to you.
Right.
And the budget board.
Yeah, do you have any questions or need explanations? Absolutely.
So, let's do this. And then we have until November 2025.
Yeah, if you guys wanna look around and... Absolutely.
Alright.
May I ask a question, please? Um, with your permission, please. Um, I'm thinking just from, well, little bit of experience I may have had in past endeavors, you might wanna check the legalities of, if it's coming from his personal accounts, is it payable to the township of Casco who then in turn from the general fund reimburses the clerk? Or does it become a sticky witness?
There's gonna be a paper trail.
It becomes a sticky witness.
If it's checked, it's wrong. Joe's...
If I didn't generate directly?
No.
No, that might be a sticky witness.
I think there has to be a paper trail.
Okay.
Because she's not your employee.
No, absolutely.
Okay, so that's all. I just wanted to make sure that the, there's no sticky witness.
Uh, nobody's cutting the check. That is, that is not the way you can do this. That's simply not done. So, we will, um, discuss this later. There is another way to do this, but you are not writing a personal check to township clerk for duties performed. That's not even legal. So, I agree with you.
So, I, I did a preliminary budget. Um, there's a couple things I still need to do some research on. I tried to forecast as best as I could. You guys have any questions? Like, I, I apologize for giving it to you at the table, but at least we have another month, so if anybody has questions or wants me to change anything, we can have...
Questions?
That's fine.
That's fine.
That's fine, yeah.
Okay.
So, we don't have to do any action on the budget itself. I don't know if you guys wanna do action on me. I mean, we talked about it at the last meeting, but aren't we formally wanna do something with a motion?
Oh, I did, I did, um, say that I would and I would. So, then, um, I'm not quite sure of the specifics of it, but the main thrust is that, uh, the township clerk will be paid for managing all budget and letting preference set by saying that we did 2025, uh, budget into 2026. For the amount that she has requested, which is what?
Thirty-five hundred dollars.
For that amount. Oh, thirty-five, I see it right there. That is an option.
Okay, we have support.
I'll support.
Okay, we have motion, support to, um, pay the clerk thirty-five hundred dollars from the supervisor's salary. Okay, any other question? Okay, roll call vote?
Anderson, yes.
Yes.
Conzens, yes.
Stephen Chess?
Still agree, yes.
Motion carries. Okay, alright.
Well, look, yeah, I'm not against paying the clerk for doing this job at all. I have no problem. And against, uh, getting supervisor's salary from a desk paid for the clerk to do the job by the township. Initially, it was more than willing to hire somebody outside of the township to do the budget and help the supervisor get through that process without charging whom a cent. And now we're trying to have somebody in-house do it. To me, that does not seem both consistent, logical, or fair.
Well, it's not the same person taking over the responsibilities. It's adding to her responsibilities, which is going to cut, it's not going to cut into her work week because she's going to be dealing with a lot of time.
I'm not opposed to her being paid. I think she should be paid for the work, just as anyone who doesn't should be paid. I just don't understand why now it's the burden of the supervisor to pay for that work when we initially knew that the supervisor was having difficulties with this particular area and were more than willing to hire external support from township officers to pay for them to have additional support in that endeavor, which I don't really would have been the best way to do it because it would have prevented the escalation of salaries in the township somewhat.
But that didn't happen.
But, yeah.
No, I know it.
But that, some we can discuss later in the issue.
Yeah, but he never, he never said that we're gonna charge you any help and that is what we're doing now. I don't think, I agree with it.
Yeah, I agree with it, though.
If you're good with it, then...
Okay, the motion was made, I'll re-vote.
Just in that sign and that sign is a trap.
Okay, now we move to aye is Building Official Enforcement Stipend. Okay. Okay, we have here, from Kirk Singh's side, our, um, Building Official and Enforcement Official over the last year and a half that I've been working Casco Township. The plates have folded down. I figured out who, who come most of the problems residents or properties are. I'm asking the board to consider code enforcement be administered on the plate cases only, unless it there's a light ordinance violation that needs to be addressed. So, from township, I know operating this fashion, I'd like to ask the board if we can roster the hourly rate and go with a stipend of seven hundred dollars per month. I'll take care of all what is needed to be done as due. Thank you for your consideration. And also, this is the building inspector compensation. This is for office work here. We approved this for our previous, um, building official. Five hundred dollars a month for office work related to his duty.
So, his stipend includes the, um, code enforcement. This is just for code enforcement.
There's another, the legal science paper is the building inspector stipend. For some reason, it got bunched as one line item on the agenda and it actually needs two. I would just like to say that I think Kurt is doing an amazing job. You've done so much more this year than this probably been done in 20 years.
And also, also, Kurt, when he's asking for code enforcement, will pay for it if he has to represent us in court any kind of time that he may spend there.
Well, and you, you wanna say why you kinda figured it out just so they know, or...
Basically, at the end of code enforcement, I took my hourly rate, added that and basically, if you're doing it, and I'm off, and it tightens it by four, seven hundred is what I came up with.
Yeah.
Some days I might be here longer for code enforcement and I have to go to court. Some days nothing's gonna go on. So, you know, um...
Alright.
Yeah, so that's what I'm trying to do.
Yeah, and Kurt, um, before you motion, Kurt noticed that when he deals with it, um, often when he gets resolution, there's no hard feelings. If we just want to problem correct it and up seeing him in action, does a good job.
That being said, then I make a motion to, um, pay a stipend of seven hundred dollars per month to the building code and enforcement officer.
Support.
Do we wanna do this as a separate line item? I don't, for, for code enforcement and then a separate one for building official, or...
If, if we are combining the job...
Are we combining it? How do you...
No, they're two separate teams.
How do you wanna present it?
Right, they are two separate teams. I mean, so we probably should separate them. I might rely on Brandon and Katie because we're working together. Maybe send out a letter once in a while.
So, the building enforcement, um, that's paid with, um...
The five hundred dollars constitutes, uh, time in the office.
Yes.
His, his main source of income will be the fee scheduling.
The fee schedule, that's...
Right. The previous building, but until he did the stipend, because he was in the office, you know, for however many hours a day and...
So, in that case, yes, it's, it's too limited.
I think, yeah, I think we need to make it too limited.
I do think that, right, a little bit, like, you know, checking the township, because that's part of the job. He's being out there.
Okay. Alright, that's my vote, yes.
So, I, I don't know, can I, when I do it, Brandon, you might know, can I do like a aye, because it's, it's number, or letter I in here? Can I do like a aye and then a I dash one to do?
I work in I dash A.
You think that's appropriate to do it now?
Yes, I guess it could be a combined one check.
Yeah, the, yeah, but I'm just talking about proposal. Here is a separate.
Yeah, because it might change.
Absolutely.
We want it to be separate.
Excellent, yes. Yeah, I dash eight? Yeah, we're gonna do like a I dash eight for the building official one.
Good. Alright.
The building official, and we'll, we'll keep the I.
Work of our... Both of them.
Does someone make a motion here?
I do.
I'll support.
Okay, we have a motion, support for, um, the item, I mean, line item IA that we paid Kurt seven hundred dollars a month for code enforcement.
I, it's just I for the, I'm gonna just do I as the, as the code enforcement. And I'll do IA as the county official's own office.
And five hundred dollars a month for...
No, we could do it separate.
Oh, you do.
So, we're gonna do, let's go have an I and then we'll do IA.
Okay. Alright, we have a motion, support for IA, that's the, um, or I, that's the, for code enforcement, seven hundred dollars a month. Any discussion? Okay, roll call vote?
Anderson, yes.
Yes.
Conzens, yes.
Stephen Chess?
Still agree.
Okay, motion carries. Okay, now IA, this will be the five hundred dollars stipend for office hours for the building official.
I make a motion to approve a, um, monthly stipend of five hundred dollars for the building official's office hours. I'll support.
Okay, we have motion, support, um, for I, for a five hundred dollars a month office stipend for the building official. Roll call vote?
Anderson, yes.
Yes.
Conzens, yes.
Stephen Chess? Okay, motion carries. Next one is Schumacher Technology Group. This is for our, um, website redesign facility package and the annual website hosting backup and security support package. Total amount is two thousand five hundred ninety-five dollars.
I think when we hired them, we approved to do this, but I didn't know if we had approved for the annual. That's, and it's over my, my...
Okay.
That's why I put it in here.
Okay, now, the website...
I, I think we should just approve it at, you know, the total for that, but I, I think we might have already... We didn't pay for it, but I think we okayed it and whenever we hired them.
Yeah, yeah, we was adding like eight.
Yeah, but they never billed us, yeah.
Right, okay. Yeah, I don't know if any of you go on to our...
Do you have to do this?
I had to, I had to add their name. I had to, I had to add their name into my, as a vendor, I never really tried, so.
So this is, this is the annuals?
Yeah, this is for when they, they did the whole website and then for the annual support that you're providing.
Yeah, the website's a very nice website, sure sealed.
It's much more than a brand.
I make a motion to approve paying in two thousand five hundred ninety-five hours to Schumacher Technology for the municipal website and annual backup security support, et cetera.
Support, okay, we have motion and support to pay Schumacher Technology Group for developing the website and for its annual support package for two thousand five hundred ninety-five dollars. Any additional question? Roll call vote.
Anderson, yes.
Yes.
Kuzinski, yes.
Stephen Chess.
Stover, yes.
Emergency road fund of twenty thousand dollars. We do this every winter. We move twenty thousand dollars just in case if we have any road emergencies in the late winter, early spring.
I make a motion to approve emergency road contingency fund of twenty thousand dollars for.
We have motion support to approve the emergency road fund of twenty thousand dollars. Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Anderson, yes.
Yes.
Kuzinski, yes.
Stephen Chess.
Stover, yes.
Okay, motion carries. Okay, here, border review resignation, Chingy Molli notified me as desired, as I resigned from the border with review effectiveness statement.
I make a motion to accept Mr. Chingy Molli's resignation.
I'll support.
Okay, we have motion support to, to accept the resignation of Chingy Molli from the border review. I have nothing to say, this will give us many years of dedicated service to the border review. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. I recommend, okay, this is M, I recommend that the board review move Chuck Gibson to the board review alternate to full member of the board review.
I make a motion to order Mr. Chuck Gibson to the border review.
I'll support.
From his alternate status.
Okay, okay, all right, we have motion support to recommend the board remove Chuck Gibson to the board review alternate to the full board review member. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay. Next one is the Sinclair County Road Commission Annual Meeting. It's going to be Tuesday, February fourth, two thousand twenty-five. I always go to it, I feel it's important. I know they tell us that how much they're going to give us, but I think it's important that they, we keep dialogue with the road commission, and I propose that we go, we, three fifteen to four thirty time. The member of the board, township board is welcome to come. Virginia King last year with me, so.
It's Texas.
Okay, all right. So I'm going to, I'm going to call for the, the three fifteen time period.
Do we need a motion? No, that is just going to outweigh I, I think.
Oh, really?
Because we don't need to do any motion on it.
All right.
Before you do the next one, I would like to ask that we take this letter out. I don't think we need that letter.
No, we don't.
Just because, don't think I, I should keep that packet forever. I have trees.
Okay. Yeah, I just don't remember that.
Just, yeah, just keep them on.
Okay, do we have here trademark construction or asking for a bill? Okay, Kurt, can you help me refresh this, whether they're asking for a total? Thirty-one sixty, thirty-one sixty, and that's for waiting. Yeah, that's, that's.
That's on here.
It's right here.
It's right here.
Okay, thirty-one sixty.
I make a motion to trademark construction to pay what they're asking.
Okay.
I'll support.
All right, next one, we, we also, well, we also have to that, it would be like, it would be O. I is the, on January ninth, two thousand twenty-five, the bid is described in attached document, was rescinded by trademark construction LLC. The project needs to be put back up. So we did approve this, that's me as full board.
So, do we need to?
Do we need to redo this?
Yes, we need to make a motion to put it out. So we need, do we need to do two separate motions on maybe?
So, yeah, well, at least.
That's my fault, because I said to combine them, but we thought we need to separate.
Yeah, I'd say at least a motion to rescind. You know, because we did.
Well, we need a motion to pay them too, though.
Okay, yeah.
We need to, for the, the thirty-one hundred or whatever. We didn't go ahead and get that, and that's why I said I think we need to do separate.
All right. Okay, we have, okay, motion to pay the bill for thirty-one hundred dollars, and then we have support.
Who, who did the motion?
I did.
Danny. Okay, motion support. Okay, roll call vote.
Anderson, yes.
Yes.
Kuzinski, yes.
Stephen Chess.
Stover, yes.
Okay, motion carries.
After this long and successful renovation and extension of that hall, how did this end up going to the wall like that with my goodness? I don't understand that.
Little misunderstanding, and Mark did not, or did these changes, adjustments, were not submitted to the township in a, in a form that we could approve earlier.
Yeah, we did just.
Yes, we had to do what we just did to rectify that. The, the expenses are legitimate.
Yes.
We don't contend, there's no contention here. They deserve the money, they did wonderful work. We have no complaints about the work or how it was managed. We just simply didn't get a timely invoice on it, and we're taking care of that now. That's all right, we're here.
It's a beautiful hall, we have some ground level, so.
Is there something happening?
Just disappointed that the contest left so unhappy after doing such good work.
I think we'll be fine.
I hope so.
Okay, we have the second, what would be P A? Okay, we have to rescind. We had a, we made, we had a contract with trademark construction. We need to send this out that house bit.
I make a motion that we send out, or we advertise for bids on the construction in the old hall.
Yeah, this would be to put a doorway between the two offices for the, for the building department and just to go over and redo the walls and repaint them and freshen them up.
I made a motion to support that.
Okay, we have motion support, send this out for, for bids, for the refurbishment of the existing offices. Okay, roll call vote.
May I ask a question? Who's going to be in charge of getting this language for the bid put together and see that it's put in the paper ASAP?
I, I can.
ASAP.
Okay.
All caps, three exclamation points.
Okay, all right, we have roll call vote on this?
I will do roll call.
You have roll call vote?
Anderson, yes.
Yes.
Kuzinski, yes.
Stephen Chess.
Stover, yes.
Okay, motion carries. Next one is building code books. Kurt here, now he's assuming the duties of building official, he needs a code books here in order for him to do his job. He has a listing of all the books here. Boy, I wish he had a dollar, I mean, a sum, a total.
There's a total.
Oh, yeah, I, I, sorry, just on that. Okay, two books each of the books listed for one thousand seven hundred and forty-seven dollars.
I make a motion that we approve the books listed for a total of one thousand seven hundred and forty-seven dollars. More than only a total.
Yeah.
Good point.
Okay, let me make a counting.
We have pictures in them.
Yeah, big numbers. One of them's going to be his office set, and the other one he carries out in the field so he can reference to them right there, or else, okay. All right, okay, roll call vote.
Anderson, yes.
Yes.
Kuzinski, yes.
Stephen Chess.
Stover, yes.
Motion carries.
Are you guys going to take care of working them?
Yeah. All right, next one is fringe benefits. We've had, we found discovered.
The building department.
Yes.
Never vigilant that they are.
Yes, they are.
Found quite by accident. Chapter twelve, fringe benefits, go down to section twelve point four eligibility, highlight B two and C two.
Kind of go.
Yeah.
Can we just, can we just get rid of those?
Yes, we can.
Just get rid of the whole.
We can just, it's a whole thing, that anything to do with age, this and that, please, no more action than for us to.
We approve it, yeah, we have that care and show make the changes.
All we have to do is do a motion.
Yeah. Yep.
I make a motion that we just remove section twelve dash four B two and twelve dash four C two. Just remove the total.
Yeah.
So there's no age, nothing.
Right.
To afford.
Okay, we have motion support, these are to remove certain items of the fringe benefits on chapter twelve. Okay, any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, citizen comments? Okay, board comments?
I do have a comment. I just want to share, I got a little email from our shredding company, and in the year two thousand twenty-four, we conserved five, well, we had six hundred and thirty-four pounds of recyclable paper, which is a result of your efforts. The found resources have been conserved, five trees, a hundred and twenty gallons of oil, two thousand two hundred and nineteen gallons of water, nine thousand five hundred and twenty-two kilowatt hours of energy, and thirty-two cubic yards of heat.
Wow.
Okay, in your packet, I guess there's pipeline training that happens on Tuesday, February twenty-fifth, I mean, twenty, February eighteenth at five thirty in Southern Marysville at the Knights Club. Interesting, I've gone for it.
Yeah.
Yep, the pipeline training is free, you go there and.
Saturday is still.
When is Saturday?
What's that? It's Tuesday, February eighteenth.
I can see it's election season, but I don't understand.
But if you don't have that.
Yes, and then if you text, you can, all that kind of stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not to be missed. It's probably a dress up event.
But if you don't, if they don't send it to you, I guess, or to you, or email, you could.
I'm good.
Wouldn't miss it for the world.
They have three days.
Some people will go out on the end of the night of February just for free.
They, they discuss, they discuss interesting things.
It was interesting.
It is.
I, I like to, I like to go to all of them because I learn something from all of them.
Yeah. And, you know.
I haven't been here that long, so I need to learn.
If they pull the pipelines from underneath Casco Township, probably say, there's lots of them under there. Some pretty big ones, too. And that's what this deals with, pipeline safety. Okay.
Okay, so I have something to say also. Okay, so last month in December, at the planning commission meeting, we adopted the Casco Township Central County Michigan Master Plan.
Yep.
So that is done.
Yeah, so I will have Steve in here, the march meeting, because since the board approved it, I want him to come and do presentation and show what exactly was done.
Can we get a copy of that master plan for our roles here?
Yeah, yeah, oh yeah, he's going to provide us with maps, zoning maps, okay, zoning maps and master plan maps. I want to put them here up.
And is their master plan coincide with our master plan?
Yeah, it's.
It's one of the same.
Yeah.
To say.
Oh, good.
Yeah. They've worked at it for like the last two years, and it'll be a good product.
Good.
Yeah.
Okay, so I have one more thing to say. I went to the road commission meeting this morning, and I learned a few things. I did forget to ask when we were scheduled for the resurfacing at St. Clair Highway.
Yeah, we'll find it out.
Yeah.
It'll probably be in August or September.
Okay.
And, and usually at the end of the season when they know how much asphalt is left on the major road projects.
Okay, and the bid, the bid is out in, was out in December for the runoff on Palms Road.
Yes, I believe, yeah.
Ameren Sayhav?
Yes.
What's the timetable on that?
He didn't have it yet. There was nothing.
Just the bill goes out, but they haven't got that making.
Yeah, and also, they talked about, a lot of, a lot of people talked about rentals, and that's one of my favorite searches. Did you know that we get, Sinclair County Road Commission gets nine hundred thousand dollars a year from Smiths Creek? I did not. You did know it?
Yeah, well, you got it.
Yeah, it's a lot. It's a lot.
I did not know.
Yeah.
And what do they do with that money?
I was going to say, do they pass it on to us?
They do, they do. It's always first, yeah, that's what they use for different things.
Oh, good.
And they were, they were accepting Canadian garbage until last year. So a year ago, they passed a resolution that no more Canadian garbage would be accepted.
Okay, but isn't going back to the Lennox?
I'm sure.
Absolutely, yes. It's coming from Sinclair County.
Yeah.
On our road.
Yes.
And Lennox Township is making the money off the Lennox.
Yes, and they're very paving roads because they pay them.
Yeah.
I'm surprised they did that. Years ago, Rod Royal, he would, he gave the comment, he goes, Canadian garbage is like the heroin of local communities in Michigan, once you get out of it, you can't get off. It's a surprise.
I know that they were able to do it, right?
They paid for the roads and trash trucks come through.
I can think of that, that's true.
Did they, did they talk about the center term in the end church road? Okay, we'll ask about that.
Yeah.
What, what was brought up about the paving on Sinclair Highway, we're going to be using a combination of some ARPA money along with the county match grant to do overlay in Sinclair Highway between Church Road and BT Road. The following year, we'll do from BT Road to Common Line to Bell and Ketchikan. So, I mean, if all works out, township shouldn't have to put a, a nickel into that.
So what, what more do they have to say about this Canadian trash truck? That's all. We just mentioned that Clare County doesn't get any money from Canadians at all there.
They just use our roads?
They just use our roads.
On division, how many times do you say that?
I don't know about that. Yeah, that's something to investigate, too.
Maybe Sinclair County needs to start charging puntary errors for road repairs.
Well, or, or make them, make the trash trucks go down to twenty-six mile.
Stay in McComb County.
And stay in Combs County and not get off.
I agree with that.
That, that division, because that's where we pick up the cost.
This is true, division.
Yeah.
Maybe you can bring that up at your next supervisor and see if you guys can all get together and.
It'll be interesting, yeah. We have it later this month.
I do have a question, Joe. And that emergency road fund of twenty thousand dollars, what if we don't need it? Where does that money go that doesn't go back? And then that way, we don't have to take it out of the ledger the following year?
Although our roads, though, in the last twelve years or that, they upped the amount of limestone. We put out the roads, they've been really, I mean, that was starting, there's a group in that, and our roads have been very healthy. they've been really good. I mean, that was started under Zill Group and that, and our roads have been very healthy. And yes, a lot of the townships here in the southern part of the county that fall under the Red City Garage fall into that.
Okay, so I wanna say something else about that. Um, okay, so the fellow that was sitting next to me, I don't know who he was, but I'm gonna find out. He's, he, he was a walk of knowledge, and he talked about all these, um, voices that are coming out of the landfills and, and how it's affecting all of us, and it is, all this stuff is affecting us all, everything, the whole environment. Um, but I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna get hold of who he was and, and see if I can find out some more information, because I thought that was very interesting.
Let me just see if you can come to one of our meetings.
Okay, and then him, him and his wife, I will not find out. Him and his wife are opening this, you know where Lucky's is on St. Clair Highway?
Yes.
Way down here. So he, him and his wife are opening, I, I didn't know it was for sale, but they're, they're taking over that store, and they're have, it's a little store.
It's, it's on, um, St. Clair Highway, you mean the modern China Township?
Yeah.
Yeah, smoked fish.
Yeah, that's the one, yes, yes, yes. And, and he said his wife is really good at making homemade pies and stuff. And, and soups.
Ooh.
Yeah, so I'm thinking we should, see.
We're gonna have.
Support this.
I see.
Yeah. So this, this girl was from China Township.
Little store. Yep.
This, this person in China Township, that might have been, um, oh, I can't think of his name. He and his wife are there, they have a 26 mile. For solar farms, landfills, there's a whole lot, and it's centered in China Township.
Oh, yeah.
He used to be a trust, he might still be a trustee.
Is it, is it the inter?
Yes, that's her, and his wife, and, yeah, that's who that was.
Okay, well, he, he, he just knew all these places, all these divisions.
You're well learned.
Especially people on top of our country, that's for all those.
What about the people in Southern Township? All those, that, those separate.
Well, they develop material and all that, and they are working.
Well, they're, they're right now trying to stop all the solar farms that are hiding up here and there, that stand towards.
They're trying to stash it.
Okay, anything else important? Okay, we're up for adjournment?
We make a motion to adjourn, I'll support.
We have motion to adjourn, support, all in favor?
Aye, aye.